Okay, good evening. This is the August 3rd meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. It is 7:01 and we will start the meeting. First item is to review the agenda and move that or adjust any items. Does anybody have anything to adjust or comment on the agenda? Okay, we'll keep it intact as it is. Next order of the business underneath Administrative out matters is the approval of the minutes from our June meeting. And Candace's motion.
Oops, time hang me up.
So Tom, actually, Tom, Tom made a motion to accept.
And Melissa seconds.
Melissa's seconds. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, call it to vote. Everybody in favor of approving the minutes, say aye or raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? So it's unanimous. Just to back up a little bit, Peggy, do you need a list of who's here?
Yes, please.
Okay, so at the conference room or at the town offices, we've got Chris Perley, Jeff Lundstedt, Lloyd Dyke, and myself, Kevin Hanson. Other members on Zoom are Melissa Hernandez, John Cromer, Rob Rooker, and Tom Wallace. And then we have from the community, Jim Quagliano, Ian Albenson, I guess, would be community. And we have one person on the phone, if you could identify yourself.
Hi, this is Kate Bentley from Bristol Core. I couldn't get the Zoom video to work, so I'm just calling in from my cell phone.
Okay, thank you. So that's who we've got right now, Peggy.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next item would be zoning administrators report. If you've got anything you'd like to present, Chris?
Sure. Ben, busy? The DRB has had quite a few hearings in the last few months. As Peggy can attest, we were here till almost 11 o'clock last Tuesday. They've given approval to a few small subdivisions. One of the big projects that's out there that they heard the preliminary on is the the 20 units that will be going in by Stony Hill Properties and EverNorth and ACCT are working together to do next to the fire station. They've had a couple of conditional uses. One is for a contractor Jared down Hewitt Road. But for the most part, it's been pile of permits. We've got I think a total of 10 new homes so far. They've been permitted to be built this year in town, which is huge in rural and office.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Chris? Thank you. Underneath miscellaneous correspondence, I did, because there was a deadline for a survey carry. Katie, in her capacity as regional planning, had emailed out a survey by Vermont Housing and Finance Agency, and I did pass that along. It was addressed mostly to zoning administrators and city planners, staff planners, if you will. I did fill it out, but once they started filling it out, I could see why it was addressed to those people, and I'm not sure if anybody else made the effort to do it or not. Her point was trying to keep up awareness on affordable housing, which was really the focus of that. Was there any comments or questions about that? From anybody?
I, I, I did review it and, and go through it. I answered what I could answer. But once I got a few questions in, it was pretty much, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. At least, at least I saw it. We have it, you know, we have it and, 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 you know, we've got the information anyway.
Thank you. It is a lot more technical than I would have anticipated based on the initial comments. Thanks. We still do have an open position. You know, I think we should keep that in mind. I also think, and maybe hopefully I'm not speaking too far out of turn, but I, I would think that it would be great to focus on people or person with an agricultural background. I think we're lacking in that category, and it could be a very important aspect as we start developing things, particularly with the conservation activities and initiatives. Melissa?
Yeah, I had someone in mind, but I haven't contacted her. Should I mention here or just wait? I wanted anybody's opinion or should I just wait to see if she's even interested?
I'd probably reach out to her, Melissa, and then have her go through the process for the slide board.
Yeah, we don't want to rag people's names.
Right, right. And I apologize. I've been swamped the last couple of weeks. I was going to contact her before the meeting, and I'm sorry, I don't know what happened, but I missed that we were having the meeting tonight and not on the third Tuesday. So I really just ran out of time to contact her.
I'm sorry. So the last meeting, if my recollection is right, we did decide to change to the first Tuesday. You got the agenda and all, I hope?
Yes, I got it. I got it yesterday, I think. Ian sent it. I can't remember what day that was. I think it was yesterday. Yeah. I'm sorry. I don't know how I missed that. I just completely missed that we did that. I
So let me, let me confirm the email I'm sending you stuff. I'll send you an email to confirm it's the right one. Because I had sent, sent out an agenda maybe a week ago or better.
Okay, I may have gotten it thinking it was minutes or something. I apologize. I apologize. So going forward, it's going to be the first Tuesdays?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So underneath continuing business, I put in here to close discussion, I guess, if we have any post comments on the approval or the I guess call it approval process that the regional planning went through in July, exclusive of, exclusive of the fire alarm activity. I don't know if there's any further comment on that, and I want to apologize to Lloyd because I passed over you when you were around table for comments at the meeting, and I, I apologize because I certainly was not intentional.
I, I do have one follow-up item from that. One of the comments that I brought up and questioned was, you know, training related to PUD subdivision implementation, that kind of stuff. And I think that if we could facilitate something like that, that would be very helpful for DRB and implementation of things moving forward. I think it's become clear recently that there's a bit of a disconnect between what I believe is the intention of the plan and the tools that are in there for development and the implementation of them, so. So I don't know if anybody else has had a different read on that or not.
The exact same read, Rob.
So the training would be for the boards, the community?
For the DRB.
For the DRB?
I reached out to Abson County Regional Planning, and I just need to coordinate now with their chair to get a training set up. When they do that, it might not hurt if folks from here want to also sit in so that there's an understanding of what the intent of, of the plan and/or zoning regs were. So that there's clarity and it's not just your conjecture, because I think Rob's correct. What's missing was the intent of how the regs were created and how they're currently being used and implemented. Is, if you, am I correct, Rob?
Yeah, I think so. I think that some of the interpretations of how tools could be used for development were maybe a little bit misguided or lacking that, the background of what the intention of those were.
Okay, thank you. Anything else with respect to the plan in that process?
Or where do we stand now? Is it approved or does something else have to happen?
So my understanding is this, these two subcommittees that worked with us in July will now go to the full Regional Planning Commission, and I'm not sure if they've had a meeting yet or not, and basically to, you know, present their findings, and it sounded like they would recommend approval by the entire planning commission, but that would be the next step. And then I believe it is like
Done?
Done.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe that next meeting was the end of this month or the beginning of September, if I remember correctly. It was a little ways out.
Yeah, they, they meet quarterly, and I think it's a September meeting they have.
Okay. Anything, anybody else with respect to that? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the implementation pat, tasks within the town plan. Specifically that are, were identified as the planning commissions. Prime, primary or maybe secondary involvement. Most of them were primary.
No, no, you're still good. I, I just sent both the emails.
So I did, I did take the liberty to take those tasks and as they're interrelated, or my perception of them being interrelated.
This document?
Yes. Group them, and I think there's five grouped them. So yeah, there's five groups, if you will. And, and the, the hope was it would provide a clearer guidance, I guess you could say, as to different blocks that we need to consider to work, work issues, if you will. The first block is tasks that are related to housing, and I, again, this is just here for discussion, but if you look at housing, kind of living, if you will, included businesses, jobs, childcare, any tasks that have to do with getting around town, circulation, bikes, trucks, walking, that sort of thing. And, and oh, by the way, there's no particular priority in these groups. They were just the way that I started assembling them. The second group is a group of activities that are focused around conservation, reduction, risk reduction, and are primarily around streams and rivers. The third group consisted of the mechanics of, excuse me, assuring the plan vision, if you will, is consistent with implementation regulations, i.e. the unified development law rules. The fourth group seemed to fall together as public amenities and preservation, if you will, of open land. And the fifth group was energy conservation. So those, that's a very high level highlight. I'd like to open it up now for any discussion. And we can start with a raise, raise of hands. Jeff?
Well, Kevin, thanks for doing this. It's very helpful. I did, one thing that struck me when I read through it before is that housing pops up in two different places, and well, group one is mainly housing, but it also pops up in group three. You know, update zoning UDR regulations will allow a variety of housing types, so I'm not sure. I understand you're trying to fit things in where they go, but that's sort of, sort of, that sort of straddles the two, I think.
It does, it does. You know, and
That's not a criticism, just a comment.
Yeah, I think in my mind, I didn't really think of it at, at that level, at that level. You know, I was looking at regulatory mechanics.
Yeah.
And then the vision, the vision for those regulatory mechanics would be developed in that other group.
The other part, yeah.
If we chose to work that particular group.
Well, I guess if you, if you did, you know, if you have a conduct a housing studies, we've done study, study, and then it said, we recommend we do this, that, and the other thing, then it shifts over to the other side to the UDR.
Doesn't zoning just about affect everything? At some point?
Zoning, zoning is the mechanism to implement the town plan, so zoning, zoning is going to be pretty all encompassing. There. Anybody else?
So I have another, I don't know how you were, you know, what, how you're envisioning these groups, whether the thinking was that the, the commission would say, so we have, we have how many members?
Nine. Well, we have eight. We have eight. Four of nine.
Right, so, you know, two people are, work on one group, two people work on another group. I don't know if you thought that out that, that far ahead, or if this is just more a general description.
My vision?
Yeah, sure.
So
That vision thing.
I, I would, somewhere along the lines, there was a discussion, and I can't, I'm fuzzy on where it was and who it was with, about we should prioritize and pick one or two as opposed to get mired into a lot of different tasks and end up not being successful with anything. One, one thing I did do, because when I started out this list, I was thinking, there's got to be overlap. And there is to a degree, but not as much as I thought there would be with the other tasks. So I, but I mean, we as a commission certainly can figure out if we want to develop subcommittees. If we want to, as a commission, work all together on whatever the task would be. I, I don't have a strong opinion or not trying to present either way.
Yeah, but you, but you didn't have the idea that we would move simultane, necessarily move simultaneously on all four.
I, I think that's
I think that's overreach myself, given the number of people and the time.
And, and if you, if you look at e, even how these things are grouped, even though they're grouped by like similarities, the effort is not consistent across the five groups either. You know, for instance, that, that group one is a big chunk of work. And group five, which is the energy plan, is pretty much just making sure it's humming along, you know, type thing. So there's, there's, there's inconsistency in the amount of work with each one as well. And then the other thing I didn't mention is there are some blue bars in there, so there were, when there was something that I saw as a related task to one of the other tasks in the town plan assigned to somebody else, I highlighted that. And then some of the tasks, as they relate to our tasks, this will not be the entire list of recommendations that regional planning made. I tended to draw those up in a blue bar too, so they're kind of like side conversations. So I'd like to, I'd like to kind of go around the room and get a read on initial thoughts of the structure, if it makes sense. Is there a particular priority or priorities that we should be starting to think and discuss about? Excuse me. And just to pick on Rob, why don't you go first?
So I apologize. I know, did you send this out? Because I don't remember seeing this previously.
Oh, I, I apologize, because this is the second time. So I sent out an agenda.
7:26.
7:26, and it was, it was attached to that email.
I must have just missed it.
Yeah, and it was also linked. I've been trying to link docs right in the agenda as well.
Okay, I apologize.
Kevin, Kevin, I emailed you a little bit earlier tonight too. I tried to, I tried to open the, open the links on the agenda, and they will not, they will not open.
So the, that's interesting.
So
Technology triumphs again.
Yeah. But I did, I did also attach those docs to that email, so you could pull them up if you can find that email.
Okay, I will take another look. Anyway, I think the grouping was good. It's, having not had the time to go through it, you know, my first impression is that there might be kind of higher order things within each group that would take precedent if we, in, so it's, it's hard to hard to speak to without having gone through it, so I apologize. But it seems almost like an appropriate sort of order as they're numbered. My first impression. With some of the stuff, like the, the housing stuff, I see as kind of a something that should be addressed sooner rather than later, because it's been seems to have been kind of kicked down the road long enough, and if we're going to do something, we should do something. It's my feeling.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, just to echo, just to echo Rob's, Rob's thoughts as well. I, I, you know, it's the cursory reading of, of the document, the way it's set up now. It looks, it looks good. It makes sense. And, and you mentioned earlier one of those discussions about, you know, trying to hone in on some of the activities that, that we would want to, you know, attack as a, you know, as, as a commission. And housing seemed to be at the top of my list as well. I think, I think from what I can see here, that seems to be the hot button pretty much across the board, a, as it should be. We've got a lot of we've, number one, we're dealing with, with an aging population, so, you know, housing is going to become, and already is, an issue, especially if we're looking to get our, our downtown businesses to grow and to have more, have more folks taking part in that. You know, my thought is, you know, more younger people, more people coming into town, they're going to need a place to live. And, and, you know, so that's, but I think it looks, from what I can tell here, it looks as if we're, I think we're all on the same page there. You know, I'm a hu, huge advocate for doing whatever we can to support, deport new housing and new housing projects in, in, in the town. And that, we also have to look, you know, infrastructure as far as water, sewer, those types of things, and farther down the road, perhaps even first response, first responders, police department, fire, fire department, those, those types of things as well. But I think this is a good, this is a good solid jumping off point.
Danny, thank you. Tom?
Sure, I'm here, Tom.
Here we go. I've got the same thing. Obviously, housing is in my bailiwick anyway, so I'm all for talking about that. I think as far as our approach to it is, is, and I think Kevin pointed it out, that this is the first one, group one is going to be probably one of the larger issues that is going to take more time. So I guess I would suggest that we just, for a step at a time, start with that one as a group, and I'll let them.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I think housing is, is, you know, a big issue that we need to tackle. I guess, I think I've told you before, I definitely, something I definitely want to work on. But if we all, it might be better to attack each thing for, for all of us to work on one thing. And then maybe split out, because housing, I mean, that's number one, involves a lot of issues. And then, you know, each person can, can work on a particular aspect of, of this group one. So you know, I, I'm, yeah, housing is, is just as a, a business on Main Street, have people coming in. I can't tell you how many times a week I, people come in and ask me, are there any apartments around here? Is there any place I can rent? Is there someplace, because they want to move here? And they might want to come in and just rent and then look to building or, or buying a home. So, so it, there are a lot of people asking about it that want to move, that want to move to Bristol.
Okay, thank you. Lloyd?
Yeah, I think that's a pretty reasonable list of things there. Everybody seems interested in housing, and that would be big enough, so I probably wouldn't have time for much else. But there could be some other things that we should work in somehow.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
Yeah, well, everyone seems to think housing is number one, and I certainly agree. It's a hot, it's a hot item right now. And certainly one that's worth looking into. And I was thinking about, what does that mean? Maybe I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but whatever, whatever item we pick, well, first thing we do is say, what is, what are the priority? What is the item or items that we want to work on if we, since we can't work on 15 priorities at once? And then we'd have to decide what information or data do we need, and how would we get it? Which is segueing in slightly into the next topic, but I jumped ahead, yeah. And then, once we get the information we need, because I don't think, you know, want to operate on the basis of gut feelings, then what are the specific steps we would do? So in my head, that's how I'm, I'm thinking about this.
I think I, I, I can, I'm lining it up with everybody else. I, I think, and I struggle a little bit with the updating the regulatory side, but I guess, I guess we need to understand how we want to focus housing and the associated things that are all part of that group one before we get into a regulatory update, if you will. I, I struggle with the zoning regs, and I keep thinking about them a lot, because you know, I was, I was on the zoning commission for, in the mid 80s for a while. You know, I was, I was on the zoning commission for what, in the mid eighties for a while. And uh, it was a zoning board planning commission wearing the same hat, so it was a whole lot less formal, but the. Regulations at that point were so unworkable, they weren't followed. And today's regulations are a vast improvement over that, but I can see where. There's a lot of opportunity, if you will, through zoning to. Focus and corral or encourage, not corral, encourage. You know, development, but I guess. I I guess I get kind of impatient with that aspect, knowing, knowing that we need to step back and do some homework, which. You know, I think we're all discussing, discussing that aspect. Is there anybody that wants to just um, add any thoughts at this point?
So, I I, yeah, I do actually.
Oh, go right ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, no.
I don't have a little box, should I have a little?
Yep, I'm just, I'm just an observer sitting in the back here, um, the other big one that I want, I think. Goes hand in hand with the actual housing aspect, which is the second option, the second thing you have listed here. Which is really looking at the small and like, uh, small businesses and business in general in our community. To make sure, we bring all the people we want into town, but long term goal. Is really making sure that those that live here can work here, this has been a big focus that goes. It's so many levels, I mean, you look at the current data. It's like ninety five percent of people that live in Bristol commute at least uh, twenty miles to work and then. It's it's pretty bad, so. Try and figure out that piece of those, as we figure out more housing options. How do we keep those folks in our community, working in our community, spending monies in our community? And then it just keeps drawing.
Yeah, I know, I think, and and what I, I kind of said something about that, group one is really about living. You know, it's the housing's the buzzword, but it's about living again. And that was one, you know, there was a few things with the select board discussion, which was a couple months ago now. And one of the comments that really struck and you could see, based on body language, not like I guess and knows, but based on body language. The comment was made, uh, housing's important, but we gotta make sure we can provide. Jobs as much as we can effectively do that within the community too well, so that's, that's a well taken point, I think. Any further comment?
Just, just to expand on that, I think this all kind of, you were mentioning Kevin, your. Thoughts that perhaps the regulation side of it and and so, I think it's too tied in to just focus on that because. In terms of businesses and and needs and accommodating that as well, I I think. That homework needs to be done there before we can just start trying to implement any other regulatory things. To facilitate that.
Well, I totally agree, I just was expression, expressing my impatience with the. Getting to the end result, if you will, but I totally agree and I understand where you're coming from. Jeff and I had a discussion yesterday about the process and make sure that as we walk down this path. We are deliberate in setting up our process so that we don't end up. Uh, making a wish we had not taken this shortcut or that shortcut, and Rob, that's really what you're talking about. So is it safe to summarize that we as a group? Want to tackle this group one. And we will further develop how the task may get laid out. Um, whether we do it as a large group or subcommittees. And then. Start looking at all the multi facets within this one group, is that? Is that well captured as to what the discussion was, or am I missing something? That's good, okay. Yeah, Melissa?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay.
The idea of get together and. You know, farm out tasks and.
Yeah. So I guess as far as homework is concerned, if you take, do take that sheet. Um, I didn't hear, and I'm not trying to tap myself on the shoulder, but I'm not hearing a lot of. Um, dissatisfaction or um, rework of that sheet, but take that sheet and use that as a. Homework piece for the group one section. Um, to better define or uh, develop input as to. Where where you think that maybe can go, may go, can go. Thanks. So. Are we done with that? Nodding heads, so the next item of business is um. We had an email which was part of that package that went out, so I don't know how well it's been broadcast, but. There is a series of planning grants available from the state. And. The focus is, you know, as far as. The the grants are concerned, they're looking for um. Anything that's going to enhance, you know, planning within a town or whatnot, but uh, there's a lot of. In between the lines about housing, which um, you know, is is a statewide issue. The grant total is, you could, the grant could be up to twenty two thousand dollars if you. Dotted all your Ts and crossed all your Is. Um, and the really cool thing is, is it needs a ten percent match, so even. If we were to get the upset, I haven't talked specifically with Val or anything, but my understanding is. You know, ten percent of twenty two thousand is twenty two hundred dollars and we've got a budget that's in excess of that.
Yeah, well, in excess of that, so.
So I don't think there's any, nobody have to go on a street corner with a cup and pencils and sell them to make the ten percent. So then, the next thing that Chris is up on the screen and scrolled down to is the schedule for the grant. And I, I was a little nervous about this at first, but then I started like actually looking at the dates and so we have until. November to put in for a grant, so we've got. Two meetings and maybe some homework in between that particular time, if we choose to pursue. A funding source for some legwork to help us. Start assimilating information or developing. Different aspects as we work on this group, so um.
This is the same grant, I believe, that you, we got a couple years ago to finish up the town plan as well.
Okay.
This looks like the same grant.
Yeah, it's an annual thing. So I guess, um, like to hear a little bit of input on. You know, the the thought process of working this through. How it folds into what we just got discussed as far as the implementation tasks are concerned. And just. Maybe figure out what an action may be if it's a couple of us starting to do some homework on. Developing the grant language or what whatever the case may be. So I'll go around the table again for starters and then we'll just open it up for comments and uh, this time we'll start with Jeff.
Well, it's a great opportunity, right, and this, this is what I was talking about before, is if we're going to work on a topic like housing. We need data, and if we could get a grant and then I assume hire. Somebody who is, could an expert in housing to tell us really the hard data, what is the housing situation in Bristol? And what potential steps could be taken to change it, then we have something to work from. Uh, rather than just off the top of our head, um, so to me, it seems a huge opportunity. I'm not sure how complex the grant application process is, or we would then need help in. In finding the right contractor to do the work, but I'm sure all those things can be, can be taken care of. About Chris, you might know, is that a reasonable amount of money to use for something like that? Yeah, I mean, even if you only got half of it, that's, that's a, that's a healthy chunk of change. You could hire somebody to to do a quick survey, I mean, there was a lot of good information in the plan. Already, I was quite, I found it fascinating, actually, about housing stock and incomes and family size and so forth. But if we could put it together with a recommendation instead, what would.
Exactly.
Change things around, I think that would be great, that would be, I mean, that would be, to me, that would be a huge boon to the, to the town. Um, as Melissa was saying, see this every day in front porch forum, people are asking, anyone know a house for rent? I've, I was in, I had owned my house two days when somebody knocked on my door and asked if the apartment on my carriage house was for rent. It isn't, by the way. I'm not interested in being a landlord again, but but the the, the need is, is obviously the. The, what strikes me is there's a huge desire to live in Bristol, I hear this over and over, especially from. Young people with young children, they see this as a great place to live with little kids. And I think that's terrific, and that's exactly what they need, fight that demographic then that we're going through. The rest of the state may lose young population, but we can gain it, what a great thing for the town if we could do that. Yeah, I mean, the the housing stock that I I say all the time that we're missing, I mean, I see it on a regular basis in my office. Um, I refer to it as starter and under housing, yeah, it's the first time home buyer houses and folks that are trying to downsize, especially. In a older village like our own, where most of the homes in the village are large homes, um, family is. Um, I I use my dad as an example, spent seventy plus years living in Bristol, his dad was in Red Porbes, that was the only place. That he could find a home that met his needs, so. Finding those type of homes, um, and again, if you're a young couple. There's no stock out there that you can afford, especially if you're walking out of with a hundred grand worth of college debt. And and just life in general, there's nothing out there for you, and you get stuck in the, in the rent conundrum, um. So I I I would love to see that, I'd love to, as you said, just bringing in the proper. Folks that could analyze all that data, we have all this data.
Yeah.
But how do we, how do we analyze that and interpret it and and meet our, meet the goals that you guys have set in the plan?
Thank you. Lloyd?
Yeah, I guess so. Grants are good if you. Get money, you need. You need that information to. Make solid decisions. And it changes all the time, so. Either who wants it or. So. And what they're shit about. The smaller ones or the entry homes. They're just not.
Okay, thank you, uh, Melissa?
Um, yeah, it's definitely younger people wanting to move in, um. A lot of them, even even with a really good job, even if they're both working, they can't afford. A home, period, they don't have the money to put down on a home. So I, I still think we need some good rental. Uh, and not like renting, house renting, I mean apartments, they can be done. With respect to the environment, with respect to the town, I I, I think that's possible, but I would like to. To find out, and if we could get someone that's, you know, an expert in here that can, that can advise us. That that would be, you know, if we could get a grant and do that, that would be optimum. So it's, you know, I mean, most of, most of rent, we have a few rental places and of course apartments on Main Street. But I, you know, I think people would love to be able to move here, even if they, even if they rent. A place, an apartment, or if there's smaller homes, if we could do actual small homes. Um, and then move their way up into buying a home and staying in Bristol and doing that. So that's kind of my, my view of it.
Thank you. Tom?
Here we go, okay, good, uh, okay, I'll echo a lot of that conversation, so I I see it every day. As far as rentals are concerned and for sale of homes, of course, and our inventory is so low right now. That a house comes on the market, it's under contract the next day, uh, typically in different times, rental rates. Are usually a five percent, and now they're probably one percent, meaning somebody moves out in the morning and somebody else moves in in the afternoon. So those are always a tough thing, the other thing is, is it's hard to down, turn down free money. I don't think many of us have talked about the trillion figure prior to a year and a half ago, but now all of a sudden we're talking about that. And maybe the wonder is where it's going to get paid off, but as far as this grant is concerned, I think. Information provided will help us in making decisions to try to go through group one, so I'm I'm for it.
Thank you. John?
Absolutely, I'm gonna fall right in line with uh, with what everybody else has said to this point, um, I think it's a great idea. You know, if we can get some, if we can get some free money and be able, be able to get somebody in here who can help us organize all the information. And data that we do already have. Step one and step two, advise us if we need to collect additional data that we don't already have. My feeling is, we've got a lot of, we've, we've got a lot of information out there, uh, we just need to. You know, be able to put it all together and and uh, get it to work for us. You know, the most effective and efficient way possible, so, and I'm totally on board with this.
Thank you, Rob?
Yeah, when I heard about grants, that was my first thought, was that it would be a great tool for getting a housing study done and. Getting that item at least off the list, um, being able to move that stuff forward, so I think that. If we're able to and timing works out with approval and everything, I think that next meeting we should start prepping. For getting an application together, if they open up on the first, we can, you know. Hit that meeting with with some idea what we're going to need in order to to move forward on that.
Hey, thank you. I am, I I am excited about it as well, um, I see it a great opportunity to. Look at how we're zoned, how we're trying to grow the town and do a sanity check. Is if we've got the right mechanisms to do that. I I'm really encouraged by some of the different com- comments and perspectives that. Don't necessarily align, align with my more pragmatic um, thoughts, so. I think we've got a great start. To uh, you know, could develop, develop a nice, nice little grant for ourselves. Is there any general comment? Is there any general comment based on the discussion? Anybody want to loop back with a thought?
Just one thing, Kevin. I, I noticed that the end of this email about the grant mentions that in addition to these grants, they're developing a process to provide money to communities to use for bylaw modernization to confront housing. So that's it. That's, they're not on there yet, but so if we can get moving, then we have a chance to get perhaps some more money to work on.
So I
Yeah, to how to do this.
Yeah. So I, I clicked through a couple of the links and a couple of things that came to mind is somewhere I saw that they didn't spend their allocation last year for grants. So
Yeah, the state.
The state. So I gotta believe that we should be able to get, not too hard of a job, get something. And then the other thing is they talked somewhere in there that if you had something that could be multi-phased or should be multi-phased, plan on subsequent grant applications as you go along so that you don't necessarily have to have one big bucket to do stuff. So I think, I think as we stack down this path, we might even be able to take care of some subsequent, line ourselves up for some subsequent grant money.
Yeah, that's good. Maybe if I could ask a question, maybe you know the answer to this. For instance, on the Regional Planning Commission, who could help us write a grant? Or is that, would that be a reasonable way to do this? They're more experienced at this, maybe? I don't know.
It really wasn't that difficult.
Okay, nevermind.
No, I, I said, there, there leads a gear system, I mean. There's two sections, I remember there's a couple of sections that Katie wrote. Sort of the overview of, like the project overview, and that's sort of that really the meat and potatoes when that's the toughest piece. But after that, it was, it was, we had quite a few hours into it, but it wasn't truly going through the form. It's like, oh, what's that? You gotta add this piece. So I, I think this group is more than capable of achieving this.
Okay.
We were able to do it. And if we did it as the planning mission.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, first of all, I forgot, I'm sorry. Well, if we get someone to come in and help with analyzing data, as, as John said, or, or you know, doing surveys themselves or whatever, I think we also, it's also important to have either that person or if it's an additional person to look at how we can attract more business here and what, specifically what kind of businesses, like production, you know, manufacturing, that kind of thing on a small scale. What, what would be in keeping with Bristol and what would be a good fit? And therefore, what kind of businesses maybe we could actually seek out to see if we could get them to come to Bristol? So that's, that's that part. And then the other thing was, so it looks like there's just 30 days for the application to be in, right? The, from September 1st through the 30th is the deadline. Should we have something additional? Because we have the meeting on the 7th. And then that gives us like, you know, three and a half weeks to get it done. Should we have another, just a grant meeting at some point? To, before the 7th?
So the application, application deadline is November 1.
Okay, well.
There's a couple of other
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I read the
I, I did the same thing initially.
Yeah, yeah. The, well, what's the RPC confirmation of the planning process? Oh, that means the, the plan has to be approved by this. Okay, okay. I see that now. Okay. You know, we're in bold where it says the deadlines November 1.
Yeah, that, so that's the one I need to reach out to Addison County Regional to make sure that they will have had their approval meeting by this. And if not, even though it's not agreed that it's in the pipeline, would that still make us up? So I'll reach out and give clarity on that, please.
That would be great. Thank you. I would assume that we're to the end of the line that there would be some flexibility, but you never know. Is there any, but any other general comments? Or circling back with other comments? So I, I would like to propose that a couple of people or somebody, somebody, a couple of people get together and have prepared the narrative in a draft form for our next meeting.
But we can't see what it looks like until September 1st, but we need to write. Is that correct?
Uh, just we may still have
I don't, it hasn't really changed much.
Okay.
You could look at historical.
The program, okay, yeah.
And I think, I think, and I, I used the word draft. I think we should be lined up for our next meeting with a narrative that makes sense. It'll fold into here. And if we've got to massage it a little bit, so be it.
I can dig out the last grant.
Yeah. And there's, there's a couple of email numbers or emails here that I'm sure we can get some help from.
Yeah, they were great to work with last time.
Well, I think we'll have to work on it.
Yeah. So is there any other burning desire? So I'm, you know, if you want, if you're agreeable, Jeff and I'll work on it as well. And Jeff and I can
And then we'll circulate a draft.
Put something together and have some draft to chew on at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Is, is everybody in agreement? Any, any huge, I want to get it done myself, I want to do it. Or I want to do
Happy to have anyone else who wants to contribute. But it's, it's usually my experience in doing things like this is one pen is better to start and then it goes around and then we can see what people have to add in. If two or three people try to write it from the beginning, it's a little hard.
Yeah, exactly.
It's cumbersome.
And then the other, excuse me, Melissa?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, if you, you know, if you put something together and send it around, can you put it, you know, in a, in a a document where we can edit, we can make, maybe make comments and then send it back to you? And kind of get, get the thing going before we get to the meeting next month.
So you, we'll have to look at the mechanics on how to do that. The
We, we've done it before.
With it.
We can do it on Google Docs.
Yeah, right. But the, the, I don't, Kevin's issue is, is there, there's a huge issue with open meeting laws.
When you work collaboratively on a document, anything that, that more than that, once you have a certain threshold of your members, it has to be available to the public at all times in its working form as well. So they're working What's that, Melissa?
Well, I think
I would think Google Docs would work. You can have it.
Yeah, but you can't have it open day.
So perhaps the thing, perhaps the thing, because we've tried a little bit in the past, and I mean, we're already struggling with getting documents up somewhere and down. So and, and if we had to think out, maybe the best thing to do particularly at this point is, you know, you, you collect your thoughts and then we openly discuss them at the next meeting.
Well, I, I don't know what exactly how this, you know, regular open meeting thing would work. So I'm thinking out loud now. So we could do a draft. We could send it by email to everybody as a Word doc as an attachment. Say, please send your comments back. That's not quite working collaboratively.
So if it's a one-way conversation.
Right. So they can respond. So if you send out the email and they respond just to you.
To me.
So you could gather all the comments and, and either create a synopsis of the comments or incorporate them into the edits.
Right.
Whichever way it works, that's fine. It's just no reply all.
Right.
Reply all. It's where it gets dicey. I, I don't, what you guys are doing, none of this nefarious. You're not making decisions. So the, the odds of the, of there being extreme scrutiny. But it's easier not to have inadvertently cross the lines if you don't have to.
Right.
But, but they're also working on changing those ever since COVID hit. They realize that people are doing more remote work, we're seeing less in-person meetings. So there are, so let me look. I, I have a little punch list I need you to send me when, as we get, we'll touch base right after this meeting.
Okay.
Stuff I'd like, I need from you, and then I'll
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. And then if it turns out we can use some sharing platform, then we could do that. But for now, we can stick with edits to a Word doc.
Yeah, one, one to one would be
I don't know if it would be a good idea, but if we had together incorporated different things. You could fit in there or something.
We could do that.
You have the buffer.
Yeah. I think, yeah. The gauge might be, that would be a September activity more than a or do we want to entertain having a meeting in two weeks?
I, I think, I think if you guys get together in your first week of September, have the discussion and you may be fine. And if, if, if at that meeting you realize we got a boatload of work left, let's, we can get together in two more weeks.
Yeah.
Because their earmark is that there's working meetings for you. You cannot, you can grab those when we need them.
Yeah, there, there's time.
I, I don't think we need to have another meeting in August. I'm going to be traveling and
I like
seeing family. And it's August.
It's the last summer.
Okay, the end of summer. Boo hoo.
So let me be clear, you, you will interface, I'll
I'll, I'll get something and get together with you and then we'll send it out. I'll send it out to everybody individually as an email with a word attachment.
Okay, so I think you can send it out to everybody.
Yeah.
In one email.
Yeah.
Everybody can't reply.
Don't just don't hear reply all.
And then we will do that.
Unless you tell me that I can do otherwise.
And we will do that no later than a week before the next meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that'll give everybody a week to look at it and chew on it. Is that, will that work? I see heads nodding.
Thumbs up and heads nodding, life is good.
Yeah, okay. Any last thoughts or comments on the grant activity? So I guess at this point we can take public comment. There's a couple of people where there's some people from the public with us tonight, if anybody wants to make a comment or statement.
Jimmy, you got anything?
Jimmy, looks like he's sleeping. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Tom?
Wallace?
A second.
We go.
On seconds. Uh, well, I'm, I need to ask if there's any discussion. If not, everybody in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? So it's unanimous. Everybody wants to go home. So we took eight minutes from you this time.
Okay, that was a lot more practical than, or a lot more tolerable than last meeting.
Love this. I love this group.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Take care.
Thank you.